I'm Clarkston Lewiston and KNWO 90.1.
Good evening, everybody. Today is Monday, June 20th, 2016, the first day of summer, and today is our first full moon, so it ought to be an interesting evening for all of us this evening. So, welcome. With that, John?
Would you please stand and join me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with clarity and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Okay, consent agenda, or wait a minute, Pollinator Week, sorry about that, I was jumping ahead of myself, Pollinator Week, 2016 Pollinator Week. Whereas pollinated species such as thousands of species of bees are essential partners in producing much of our food supply, and whereas pollinated species provide significant environmental benefits that are necessary for maintaining healthy, biodiverse urban, suburban ecosystems, and whereas pollination plays a vital role for the trees, plants of our community, enhancing our quality of life and creating recreation and economic development opportunities, and whereas for decades the city of Moscow has managed urban landscapes and public lands that include many municipal parks and greenways as well as wildlife habitat, and whereas the city of Moscow provides recommendations to developers and residents regarding landscaping to promote wise conservation stewardship, including the protection of pollinators and the maintenance of their habitats in urban and suburban environments, and I now for, therefore, I, Bill Lammert, the mayor of the city of Moscow, Idaho, do hereby proclaim the week of June 20th through 26th, 2016, as Pollinator Week, and I encourage residents to nurture habitats and promote the vitality of pollinators and the restoration of their populations that support us in so many significant ways. With that, Art, I'll go to the consent agenda.
Well, I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item E that should be removed for further discussion and information.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Art and a second by John to approve the consent agenda with the exception of item E which will be pulled for further discussion. We'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, and what we're gonna, we'll move on, and item E is a resolution for the airport improvements grant approval, a little bit of history on that. Gary is going to, and before we get started here, I want to talk about a couple of things, and one is, is the stuff that we're gonna learn tonight really isn't any different than what we've already known for a number of years. We're gonna reiterate a number of different things that we've talked about in the past, but it's a good time for our public and our audience to be able to reflect and see some of those things that we've been doing all along, and so with that, I'm gonna start off with a little history of the airport for those that do not know that, and of Moscow's historical involvement in the airport. If you're taking, follow me up here on the screen, in September 1939, 77 years ago, B.B. Parker, the mayor of Pullman, and Henry Hanson, the mayor of Moscow, signed an agreement creating the Pullman Moscow Regional Airport. So for 77 years, this city has been in partnership with, and in collaboration with, the city of Pullman for our airport. And there's a number of, under the agreements and provisions, the mayors of both cities and represented from each city, as you can read how we selected the board back in those days, pretty much how we do it now. We each have a city, and a county, and a university is what we've done, and a person at large. And the land for the airport was leased from the city of Pullman, and all the expenses and revenues were to be shared by both the cities, Pullman and Moscow. One thing I want to mention today, city staff, we had four people diligently working for a number of hours to put this presentation together, and the interesting and neat thing about this, it'll be marked June 20th, 2016, so anybody in the future that has questions about these very things that come before us will have this that they can refer back to. I want to start off something of interest I will talk about, if I can find my sheet of paper. It's here somewhere. Tucked in my narrow. 2017 was when the first talks of the runway realignment came.
I think that was 2007.
Well, 2007, I say 2016.
Seventeen.
Okay, 2017.
We're not quite there yet, so.
I'm missing, Gary, I'm missing one piece of paper I had. Do you even have that?
Is that page down over there?
I wanted to read.
I don't, sir, but I can certainly paraphrase what it said.
Okay, well, in 20, I had it here earlier, in 2007, in June 4th, 2007, there was a airport board meeting, and Mayor Nancy Cheney at that time reported to this council that they had agreed on a realignment process for the airport and accepted option 2C. And then she went on and talked about Kelly Brown, who was the advisory attorney at that time, who still is for the airport board, and some agreements with some other things. So I thought that would be kind of interesting, if you go back to June of '07, June 4th, that document was there. So I kind of got a kick out of that, and I thought I'd share that with everybody. So the process of the realignment talks began around that time, and when I took over in January 2014 as the mayor, the first airport board meeting that I went to, interestingly, I found out that we were right in the midst of things happening. We also already had had an environmental assessment agreement that had taken place prior to that, and of course, the mayor of Pullman is the chair of the airport board, and the mayor of Moscow is the vice chair of that board. So with that, and I'm gonna add some things in there, but we had, it's kind of interesting, we're gonna talk about open houses in the spring and the match money, and one of the things that we worked diligently for, both the Pullman side and the Moscow side, was we were looking for grant monies because we knew that this project was gonna be a $119 million project, and the percentages of match for Washington was 10%, and match for Idaho was a little over 6%, and we were able to get passed through our senators of both states, senators of Washington and the senators of Idaho, that worked together to get that matching down to 8.125, which saved us a ton of money. And for this $119 million project, roughly, we were looking at 9.7 million that we needed to get between the sponsors and other folks that were helping us, as the University of Idaho, Washington State University, Leita County, Wimmen County, yep, well as other, private individuals, which turned out that Ed Schweitzer and crew gave us $2 million total, so to get to that $9.7 million match. And so, the first, with that, we'll start off the next slide, I guess, Gary.
Okay, and thanks for the opportunity to bring the airport financing agreement back in front of the public. As you can see from the listing, the bullet points on this next slide, that we have a long history with the airport, beginning, as the mayor just quoted, 1939, pretty Fast and Furious, the beginning of the 70s, and then the 80s, and then lately, when the realignment project came forward, we had a fire flow project that was worked on back in the late 2000, 2007, 2009. Then, of course, in 2014, as the project was moving forward, on the FAA funding was becoming solidified, looked like the grant was coming through, FAA looked at the operating agreement that Pullman and Moscow had regarding the operation of the airport, and indicated because we were moving ahead and with a fairly large project, that as the two sponsors of the airport, city of Pullman and the city of Moscow, we need to make some changes to that joint operating agreement. So that was done in 2014, and that's the one that is in place today, but just an illustration of how that has kind of evolved over the years.
Gary, before we go further now, I want to mention something. One of the reasons when we talked here are Washington state senators and our Idaho US senators and state senators, but US senators from both states. One of the things we do not have in our fine area on the plus, we have no freeways, we do not have any waterways, we do not have a rail system, so our only super motor transportation for us going into these next decades is a good airport, and so that was very important for a bunch of us, and collectively. So with that going on, Gary, I'm gonna plug some things in as we go along here.
Sure, and I think the mayor mentioned that in early 2014, as it appeared the construction prices were increasing, the FAA had additional things they wanted to do at the airport, the estimate on the construction costs went up significantly, as the engineers, planners were essentially instructed by the airport board that they wanted to have an estimate that was conservative in that, once it was set, they wanted to live within that. So they didn't want, okay, we've reached that estimate, now we need more funding to continue on, continue on. So that's where the $119 million amount that the mayor just mentioned came from. Okay, so going back again in how this came forward, and we'll eventually get to the finance piece, but it all ties together. So in November of 2013, there were open houses regarding the airport that also essentially laid the project out, how it's going to move ahead, stages, those sorts of things. The environmental assessment was being completed, and we were getting ready to move ahead. So that just lists out the public open houses, so on and so forth, that went through, and you can go back, the minutes of those open houses are, they're available from the FAA. We were given copies of most of them, and they're fairly thick, and anybody who commented, written comments or oral comments, it was all written down as well. So at that point, the project was becoming a reality. It was in that same timeframe that the new estimate was developed, and so at some point, as the mayor mentioned, there, the match that we were still trying to get reduced was still at 10% at that time, because the physical location of the airport is in the state of Washington, which was a 10% match. So went to a couple of meetings, and it became clear that we were going to have to start finding a way to finance that match. So in, I would say, May or June of 2014, as we were preparing the FY 2015 budget, we were requested to come up with a formula by which the city of Moscow as a sponsor could participate in the airport project. So at that point, staff developed a proposal for $2.5 million that we thought that could be funded to bring it forward and present it to the city council. So on July 7th, 2014, then finance director Don Palmer and the city attorney Rod Hall put together a memo, which was distributed to council, which essentially said that there are two ways you could proceed with this. We looked into general obligation bond funding, that didn't appear to be something that was applicable for a project or a property in the state of Washington, although the law was clear that the city could own and could invest in properties outside of our jurisdiction. So we looked at other alternatives, and one of those alternatives was looking at the forgone amount, and we'll talk about that in a few moments, as well as whether interfund borrowing or interfund investment is a better term in order to meet that obligation. So in July 14th of 2014 was our budget workshop for the FY 2015 budget. At that time, the proposal was budgetized, if you will, was included in the FY 2015 budget as a proposal. So the proposal was laid out, $2.5 million, that was to match the $2.5 million of the other sponsor, the city of Pullman, and we proposed that we could pay that in $500,000 increments in five successive fiscal years, and that those increments would be subject to annual appropriation. In other words, the council, every year in the budget process, when it passes its annual appropriation ordinance, in this case, this year, it'll be August 15th, the public hearing on the budget will occur, the council, by passing that appropriation, authorizes the next $500,000 increment to be paid. So the combination comes from forgone amount, which forgone amount essentially means that Idaho state law allows a government to levy property taxes no greater than 3% increase from the previous year's levy, or in our case, the previous year's, well, it is a levy, it's our, it's our property tax levy. So 3% is the maximum. However, Moscow was very frugal in the 90s and in the early 2000s, and we amassed a forgone amount, meaning that property taxes were authorized up to 3% of those years, but they were not taken. There were some years that no property tax was increased, we were witnessing enough growth and new construction, which are, increased our tax base without levying new taxes. And then what happens is any forgone amount, or any amount of taxes authorized but not taken, are banked, and the state tax, state tax commission will essentially keep an accounting of those, and at any time, the city council can authorize taking those forgone taxes. And the purpose for that, of course, is that if, of course, you want to be as frugal as possible, however, if those forgone taxes were to be cleaned out or not authorized after the budget year, then perhaps some councils or county commissions would take those taxes no matter what, so they didn't lose them. So for our purposes, in the state of Idaho, there is a forgone amount, you can go back and tap. At the time, our forgone amount was just short of $500,000. So compare that to 3% of the city's levy up till that time and continuing on till now is anywhere, depending upon the new construction and annexation from the previous years, averages right around $120,000 to $125,000. So there was significant funding in that forgone amount. Interestingly enough, in that year, the forgone amount was taken for two purposes. One was for the financing for the airport, and I'll show you how all that works out here in a moment. The other was for, I believe it was $153,000, a forgone amount was taken to continue payment for, or excuse me, authorization for two police officers that we had hired pursuant to a cops grant. So that paid their salaries for three years, at the end of three years, it becomes then a local responsibility. So the council authorized both of those to tap the forgone amount. So we developed, there in our non-departmental line item, airport development, there was an amount of $500,000 in that line item, and that was continuing until the, I say obligation, until the council's commitment was finished. So how did that come out? On August 18th, we had a public hearing on the 2015 budget. Again, that discussion was had, council discussed it, and the budget, the annual appropriation ordinance was passed. On July 6th of 2015, council passed resolution 2015-13, which essentially authorized the finance director to make interfund investments for the purpose of meeting those obligations for that match for the runway realignment project. So that, even though it was included in the budget, the vehicle for obtaining those funds, at least the interfund investment, continued and needed to be done by resolution. On July 13th of 2015, again, it was a line item in the FY 2016 budget of $500,000, and then on August 3rd, 2015, council passed resolution 2013-17, or 2015-17, excuse me, which authorized that the funds be paid to the city of Pullman, who was the financial agent for the airport, fiscal agent, and that those funds could only be used for airport purposes and the runway realignment project, and for no other purpose. Okay, what will happen in the future? July 11th, 2016 is our scheduled budget workshop, it'll occur in this room, and it, again, is proposed at $500,000 for the third installment of that $2.5 million, and then I've gone out to 2017 and 2018.
Let me throw a couple of things in here, Gary. So this is our third time, right here, it's coming up, and this is gonna be ongoing for two more years after this. This will be the last one, correct, Gary?
Yes, sir.
And so this is something that we talked about two years ago, so we're kind of, once we get by this, we'll be at the halfway point, roughly.
Three fifths done. Okay, so this was the original proposal that, it's not quite the original proposal, the original proposal had, this is the forgone tax amount that council authorized in the budget itself. In the original proposal that Don proposed, that was $228,000. I can't, for the life of me, recall why it's now 2000, or 216,705, about $11,270 difference, but what is in the budget at this point is the 216,705. So as you can see, it's 11 years, 10 years of payback for the project, and by 2025, you've got the amount of money that is in forgone amount, and then you have, these amounts are the funds that are borrowed or invested from different funds.
And notice this number right here. This is the amount of the loan value, this 1.14262 million dollars. And the reason I'm talking about some things here, because a lot of folks, there's two things that some people don't understand real well, and that's business and finance. So we're gonna talk about some of, some of the stuff is boring stuff, because it's numbers, and some people just don't get it, and so we're trying to help people through this, and we take all the time we need to explain it, but this is the borrowed amount right here, not two and a half million, this right here, right, Gary?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the amount of money that you see across the top, the property tax, forgone amount, those are property taxes that are paid directly into that line item and then are paid over for the obligation. So the debt amount is down here, and as the mayor pointed out, that number is the maximum debt amount. So that was the original proposal on July 7th, 2014. Again, the only difference is that 216,705 as opposed to 228. So this is essentially the meat of the program. This is the current finance structure, there is a 2.5% interest rate, which we have been utilizing. We will talk a little bit about whether that is an interest rate that should be utilized, council's free to change it at any time. But you've got 2015, and 2015, as I explained a few moments ago, the 2015 budget authorized the payment of the $500,000. That payment was not made until two months before the expiration of the 2015 budget in August of 2015. At that point, we were winding down the budget year, and the amount was financed without borrowing from any of the funds that had been proposed in Don's memo, those were paid with general fund money. So it was funding that had been, was not, line items that were not expended, it's fund balance carryover, so that was funded through the general fund itself. In 2016 is when the second payment would come due, or increment, if you will. So utilizing that, the proposal is, we have a payroll service fund, which is comprised, it's an accumulation of funds for paid leave essentially. So paid leave that employees have accrued, so it's utilized, it's a fairly large number in the general fund, and that number right now is around $522,000. It averages somewhere around $454,000. So there's no reason to believe that an investment of a period of four years, and you'll see payroll here and payroll here. So if the funding is utilized in this budget year, and that payment has not been paid yet, so when it is paid, then interest will begin to accumulate, that will be paid back in FY 2020. So it has gone from being a five-year payback to a four-year payback. You'll also notice that there are eight years of payment here, rather than the original 11 years.
Yeah, Gary, and let's talk a little bit about, we've got four different funds, you have payroll, sanitation, sewer, and IAS. And it doesn't mean, mean it can be out of this particular order, these are one of four. And if this is how the loan schedule would go, this is how the payment would go back to those. And I want to share this, 2.5 interest up here, 10-year bonds in today's rate, 10-year bond today, and this is only going out to 2023, which is seven years from now, the 10-year bond was 1.66 today, the five-year bond is under a percent, I mean, it's really dropped. And we're gonna make some points on that, but it's important to know that in this world of ours today, today, effectively, there's $10 trillion in negative interest rate bonds, and I don't know, a lot of people don't understand what that means, so I'll give you an example. If you put money into a negative interest rate bond that was a .12, let's say I put $1,000 into this bond, a German bond, that's a negative .12 rate, that means in 10 years, instead of getting your $1,000 back, you're gonna get $988 back in 10 years, and there's $10 trillion of this stuff floating around the world right now as we speak. Okay, go on.
Okay, so, and we'll talk a little bit more about interest rates in a few moments. So the payroll service fund, essentially, we feel can use the investment, if you will. Sanitation fund is also about $1.3 million, and we're talking about working capital here. Working capital, according to a council resolution that was passed in 2011, sets the working capital for each of our general fund, special revenue funds, internal service funds, and enterprise funds, at varying between two and three months of working capital. Working capital is calculated by looking at calculating up the annual operating budget in the succeeding budget year divided by 12, and then multiplied by three. So you have, if you have a three month, if you have a two month, you divide by 12, multiply by two. So at any rate, the balances I'm talking about are those council policies for retained earnings, if you will, or operating capital. And the purpose of operating capital, of course, is to continue the business of the city. So we have revenues go up and down, and we need to make sure that we're able to cover our expenses during those times that revenues fluctuate.
Okay, and let's talk about that a little bit. So in 2011, this council, not this particular council, but the council, the city of Moscow, made, in practice, that you had to have three months operating monies in those accounts, is that correct?
Yes.
As you just said, and that's, and so with this in mind, folks, what we're doing is we're taking whatever that three months is and making certain that we're well above that operation, so it does not affect what we're doing in any of those funds. In other words, we're not stopping projects, we're not moving stuff around where we have to rob Peter to pay Paul, we're doing it in an orderly fashion that makes sense. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, these, and the reason I mention the working capital is, one of the questions that came up is what projects are being delayed or aren't moving forward, or are rates going to go up because of this? And the answer is no. Working capital, for instance, as I noted in sanitation, working capital's about 1.3 million, so that money then can be utilized, it would just be invested, it's sitting there, we maintain that balance to make sure that we can keep up. Okay, and that, again, that was the council's policy. So we would utilize $250,000 from that fund, and sewer fund as well, has a little higher balance because of the highly capital nature of that budget, because their operations are so much higher. And then the information systems, isn't a working capital fund, it's an accumulation fund, and the accumulation is for purchase of information systems equipment. So there's a balance in there, it's all according to an amortization schedule, obsolescence schedule, so you look at what you're going to spend it on, and then you invest up until the time that you use it, that way you can continue to have your money work for you. So in essence, this is the cutoff right here, where this would be the last investment, and then it starts paying back. So these funds up here, instead of being paid toward the airport, would begin to be paid back to these enterprise funds or internal service funds, payroll service fund with interest, and that is utilizing the 2.5% interest rate. So that is the plan so far. As I said, it's being treated as an investment. We regularly invest city funds, we invest them in the local government investment pool, which right now is yielding about 0.51%. Local government investment pool is very safe, and it's very liquid. So we have, if we have need for funding immediately, the LGIP is where you want to put the money. We also do estimates, and we're developing our long-range financial plan, we continue to work on that. Hopefully, as we get that closer to fruition, we will be able to take a more long-range plan on these investments. plan on these investments. We just talked to an investment advisor the other day, and he quoted us a rate at a four-year fixed rate, non-callable bond at just under 1%. So you can get callable bonds that are worth a little more. Of course, the reason that they pay more is because the issuing entity can call the bonds at any time, and if the interest rate was higher, if interest rates goes down, they're going to call the bonds. If it goes up, they're going to keep them. So at any rate, I'm having a great refresher course on bonds myself. Okay, so this is what we have today. So you can see there's a structure, and it's all set up with a 2.5% interest rate. Okay, this is a different interest rate, and this is something the council may want to consider.
Can I stick something in here?
Absolutely.
And the reason you'd say, well, okay, why in the world would the council want to go with the 1% interest rate? And earlier in the conversation, the presentation I made, and I was talking about these $10 trillion in bonds across the world that are negative interest rates. Well, just maybe, just maybe that 1% may be a good rate, we don't know. But it's the due diligence of this council each and every year to see what the significance may or may not be, because that saves us money. And when I'm saying us, I'm talking about people that live in the city of Moscow, which makes good sense. So that's why we're talking about, and we have to take a look at different things. And while I'm at it, Gary, I want to share with everybody, when we first came up with a $200, $2.5 million presentation for the airport, as well as the city of Pullman to start things off, you know, that was not an easy decision by this council, but the majority of the council passed it. And guess what? They made the absolute correct decision. And the reason they made the correct decisions, ladies and gentlemen, is because of this. They didn't do this for self-gain, they did this for the betterment of our community and the pelouse. And if we don't look forward about what we're doing, and I'm not talking about next year, I'm talking about the decades ahead of us, when there's none of these people, including me up here, leading the charge, you've got an airport. Without what we're doing, we have no airport, we know that. This is either or. And so this is the direction we're headed, and I'm proud of this council for being able to pass this. I just thought I'd throw that out there, Gary.
Okay, so again, this is just an alternative that we thought we'd throw out for council consideration. If the council, and you have to remember, the 2.5% interest rate was not something the council mandated, it was, appeared to be based on the market at that time, a fairly lucrative return, but not out of reach. Since that time, as the mayor's indicated, those bond rates have fallen. So is that 2.5%? And you have to remember, every year is a new appropriation. So you're not tied in because you said it at the beginning, council could make that decision. But as you can see, the interest rates here are much less than the interest rates in the previous example, by $15,000 in these two years. So there is, there is a situation where those actually
But you borrowed.
Less interest rate, yeah, the borrowed amount would be less as well.
141,000 plus less.
Okay. And part of that, of course, the reason is the general fund made the first payment.
Numbers is one of my most favorite things to do. It's boring a lot of people, the stuff I'm talking about, but I absolutely love this stuff, because this is what the world's about today. And for those of you that do or do not know this, the Fed did not raise rates last week. And when they didn't raise rates, the 10-year went right down, as did rates throughout the entire world. And we actually, with the 1.66, is one of the highest 10-year bonds in a good country. And I'm not talking about Greece, or Brazil, or someplace that's ready to collapse at any moment. I'm talking about big industrial countries that make a difference in the entire world. And this is the stuff I love to get up about 3:30 or 4:00 in the morning and watch. So just thought I'd share that with everybody.
Okay. So, another alternative. This again, assuming a 2.5% interest rate, if that continues, the council, as when the proposal was first brought forward, this number was $228,000, not the 216,705. So the council could elect to go back, get it back to the original 228, and that would affect it as well. Again, just another alternative for the council to consider. Lastly, what happens if you add that 228 back where it was originally intended, and went to a 1% interest rate? And as you can see, you have interest savings again down here, but you also have a more balanced approach up front. So those are all things the council could do. Now, we do have an investment policy, and that investment policy authorizes the finance director to follow the prudent man investment policy, invest in those sorts of things that can be done according to the Idaho code. Council reviewed that policy in 2010 and passed it. And Don Palmer, for one, certainly thought that this was a prudent investment, after looking at the finance condition of our finances. And I would agree with the balances that we currently carry. We have about, oh, $10 million overall in operating capital across every operation in the city. So certainly, it's, this is a model that we can follow, and it makes good sense, at least from my perspective. So, and it's continuing on that work that was done back in 2015.
Well, let's talk, Gary, let's talk a little bit about leverage, and I'll explain to people what leverage is. Leverage, what leverage is all about basically is debt. If you're too leveraged, you're in trouble. And there are cities, there's counties, there's states that are over-leveraged, there's a number of them. We're not that way in the city of Moscow, we're not that way in the state of Idaho, thank God. And so we're in pretty doggone good shape. And so leverage and debt, you do want to have some leverage, you have to have some debt, and that's not a bad thing, especially if you can get it at rates that we're talking about. It makes total sense. And so bonding, a portion of bonding, makes sense, and is a prudent thing to do. And you do that, and businesses do it all the time. The catch is, you just don't want to be over-strapped with it, and that's going to get you in trouble. So, that'll open up to council questions. What, you got any questions?
I don't have any questions. Gary, in essence, in order to pay for this, for our contribution to the airport runway realignment, we're borrowing from ourselves, basically, in order to finance this, as opposed to going out into the world and borrowing money from other people. And so, and paying interest on that. And so, we're actually saving the taxpayers of Moscow money in interest payments. The money's already there, it's already been collected, we have it in hand, and it's earning a quarter of a percent or whatever. And at this point, we're using those funds to finance our contribution to the airport, and then we're paying that back with the foregone tax amount over a period of years, correct?
Yes.
So actually, it's the cheapest way that we could finance this, that we have available to us at this time.
Yes, and one of the reasons that we researched so heavily the ability to do it was to make sure that it was a typical finance vehicle, and we were assured legally and from a financial perspective, it could be done. But that was the whole idea, was that, did you want to go, try to go out for a bond? If we could finance it internally, did that make sense? Presented that to the council, council decided to go with this.
John, hang on a second, John, before I call on you. One thing I want to point out to everybody, because we talked about a lot of numbers tonight, we talked about percentages, we talked about all kinds of things. And for those folks that don't understand it, I clearly invite them here on August the 15th, because we're going to have a budget hearing process, and people will get a chance to ask questions if they don't understand this, or if they don't know how this works. And we'd be more than happy to tell them, and explain it in depth. And like I said earlier, some people grasp business, some people grasp finance, some do not, it goes right over their head. And that's okay, you know, we're not all that fitted that way to make it happen. But we, this is a very open process, everything we're doing has been through open meetings, through all kinds of discussions and talks, and I don't even know how many different meetings we've had. But it's right out in front for everybody. And that process, folks, will continue, not only for this budget process, but for every budget process forward. The same thing in 2016 and 2017, for 2018 and 19 as we go along. John, question?
Yeah, Gary, with the 2.5%, if we were to borrow that money out in the market or run a bond, we would probably be paying more than 2.5%. Is that correct?
We haven't priced, we haven't priced GO bonds, but I'm assuming that it would be north of 3%.
Okay, so what we're going to do here is we are essentially going to pay ourself 2.5%.
Exactly.
And we will
Unless the council vote, or gives direction to adjust that.
Yes. And then we will either put it back in the general fund, or pump up the payroll, sanitation, sewer, and information service funds by the 2.5%.
Yeah, they'll all get, they'll all get paid back, yes. And the interest will be allocated to that particular fund. And I want to make it clear, too, that I think as far as the financing vehicle itself, it makes sense if you can utilize that funding, and it's approved by council to move forward with it. Questions about where it's coming from, what's happening with it, again, I welcome the opportunity to show how it's being done, and want to assure the council and the mayor and the public that no projects are being foregone, no rates are being increased because of this. These funds would be invested at any rate. So that, we're just continuing our regular course of business.
In addition to what Gary's talking about, too, we're putting 2.5 million bucks, our share, and of course, we've got partners in this, and we're going to end up with a $100 million project overall, worth a $100 million bucks. To me, that seems like a pretty good, pretty significant cost effect, 2.5%. Walter.
Thank you. Gary, following up on John's question, you're not going to increase the reserves by the additional interest, are you?
No, no, no. They will get paid back into that particular fund, if it came from the general fund.
To the prescribed percentage of
Precisely.
However you figure it.
Yep, exactly.
So the extra interest money will actually be interest income to the city?
Yes. But if it's to the sewer, yeah, but
Not to the sewer fund, not to the sanitation fund.
Interest that is paid, if, if the funds are invested from the sanitation fund, the interest will go back to the sanitation fund. Sewer fund as well.
And those funds will be increased from what they would have been had this never happened?
Yes. By the amount of interest, just as when we invest enterprise funds, that interest goes back to those particular funds as well.
But not, it will not be, if I might, it will not be held as a permanent reserve? In other words, we're still only holding three months' worth?
Oh, yes. The reserve doesn't change, it's based on the succeeding year.
Okay.
But the interest income would go back to the fund and be utilized for
For capital projects.
Whatever you want.
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Like the mayor said, some of us don't understand finance.
Well, and to be clear, the interest is coming from the foregone amount.
Yes.
That's where it's coming from. So in the future, if we decided, well, we've paid these funds back, and we don't need that, that we could forego more in the future to compensate that in order to, from a taxpayer's standpoint, you're paying yourself, you're borrowing from your savings account and paying yourself back at some rate of interest. And when you, if you decided you didn't need that in your savings account, you wouldn't have to pay it back. As long as you get the, as long as the capital came back to the, to the reserve fund of all these, to the enterprise fund, you've broken even on the deal, or at the rate of interest you would have gotten for those funds to be invested in the marketplace.
Yeah, certainly a way of looking at it.
Really, it seems to me that using ourselves as our own banker makes a lot of sense, because we're borrowing money from ourselves at lesser rate than we could borrow it in the outside markets, and simultaneously, we're paying ourselves back at rates higher than what we could get through investments out in the outside market. So in terms of strictly the cash flow, it makes sense, but beyond that, relative to the airport itself, being able to use our $2.5 million to facilitate that project, we're amplifying our investment by, instead of, well, our 6-point, well, 8.25%
1.25
Yeah. Investment is amplified by that other 91.85%, which to me is also a heck of an investment, to be able to leverage a huge project for less money than we otherwise need to contribute. And beyond that, what do we get out of it at the end? We get a regional airport that's actually functional, that is operating safely, and can function in better weather, or worse weather conditions than it does at the moment, which we desperately need as a region.
Walter?
Thank you. But as Jim just said, the money to make this whole, degrees this wheel so it will turn, comes from the taxpayers. We went back and picked up foregone property taxes, so we have an infusion of cash we didn't have before. And rather than like a bond that has a drop dead date, this goes on forever unless we stop it. In other words, once you take a foregone amount, it's taken every year subsequently after that. It's permanent, unless the council would act to, to stop it, so.
Or unless the council found somebody, a project that they wanted to use it for as well. And there's all kinds of things, all kinds of different ways you can do it.
I would agree, we can spend every penny we can take from people.
I would make a motion, if we're ready for one.
Go ahead, John.
I would move that we approve the attached resolution authorizing acceptance of the current FAA grant funding request.
I would second that motion. Okay, we've got a motion by John, and a second by Jim, to approve the attached resolution authorizing acceptance of the current FAA grant funding request. I'll start the roll with you, Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, we go 5 to 0. Thank you very much, Gary, for that presentation, and the hour is worth of work. I started tasking this guy about 5:30 this morning, and Jen, and others. And I never get tired about talking about stuff like this, I love to talk about stuff like this, it's one of my favorite things to do, it's boring to death for lots of people. But with that, thank you very much, Gary. We'll move on to the next thing, which is public comment and mayor's responses, is a period of time, we open it up for the public to speak to us for 15 minutes if they wish, just as long as it is not anything that is on tonight's agenda. Please feel free to come and state your name, address, and let us know what you want. Hello, John?
Good evening, mayor, council staff, my name's John Kimberling, I live at 1923 East East Street. I wasn't sure if I could be here tonight, so last week I stopped by and dropped off a certificate of appreciation to Mayor Lambert to thank the city for their continuing involvement for the 12th consecutive year in the Officer Newville Kids Safety Fair. I just very briefly wanted to report to you that we had another very successful event. I think I saw at least half of you, if not more, at the event, thank you for attending. We gave away roughly 600 bike helmets, I think we're reaching a bit of a saturation point where we didn't hit our high water mark, which was closer to 700 in a couple previous years. I know our new, newly appointed police chief, James Fry, was there fitting kids in helmets all day. Marie Miller headed up the car seat safety check, and I know they gave away, provided some car seats, and took back some that were no longer, what's the word I'm groping for?
Functional?
Yeah, well, when they recall. And on and on and on, the kids had a great time, all of our service clubs were involved, and the city, the police department, the fire department, all of our great community volunteers. I know pretty much everybody, I think, has been there. It's just a great day in the city of Moscow, and I know we can safely say our community children are safer because of it, and the city is huge in that. So on behalf of our committee, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
One other real quickie, I'm getting ahead of the, ahead of things because I'm here. The 12th Annual Water Summit is fast approaching in October. If you want to do a little Googling at home, our keynote speaker is going to be a lady by the name of Maude Barlow. And back when I was serving on this board, I went to Boise 12 years ago with then-county Commissioner Paul Kimmel, we got to listen to Ms. Barlow speak there. And she is passionate about water. We have a rough draft of our agenda, it's going to be another excellent event, and we will make sure you're well informed. And again, up here on the dais, there are a lot of regulars at that event, and we appreciate that. So we'll keep you informed about that as well.
Thank you, John.
October 5th, so Mike, it's what I have on my calendar, I think that's correct.
I think that's correct, we were working around our keynote speaker, is that a, it's either a Tuesday or a Thursday?
It's usually a Thursday, John. And that's here in Moscow, right? It's going to be at the best, or is it Schweitzer?
Well, we're still figuring out the facility, there were some conflicts in town, we might end up going back to Schweitzer two years in a row.
we might end up going back to Schweitzer two years in a row, just because it's available and then even things out, yeah, because we've always switched back and forth. So again, our, our group on the Water Summit really appreciates your proactive approach to that ongoing issue.
Well, we got all over three months, I'm sure you guys will be letting us know well in advance. Thanks, John.
Thanks for your time.
You bet. Others would like to come up? Okay, with that, I'll move on to the next thing, which is accepted updated council assignments. I'll turn this over to Art, our council president.
Yeah, with Dan Carskallen's resignation and replacement by Gina Terusio, all of Dan's committee liaison appointments and other organizational appointments sort of went into limbo. So what we arranged is that Gina will take over all of the responsibilities that Dan Carskallen had with the Arts Commission, the Parks and Rec Commission, and the Palouse Knowledge Corridor, and replace him with those functions. So what we need is approval from the council for Gina to officially take over those slots.
I move that we approve that.
I'll second that.
Okay, John made a motion to approve the 2016 city council reassignments with Gina Terusio. Jim, second, I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, very good, and we will move on to the next thing, which is staff recognition report. Jen Pifner has this information for us this evening. Hello, Jen.
Good evening, mayor and council, I am happy to be here to talk tonight about the City of Moscow's CHAMPs awards. This is our annual recognition program for employees. CHAMP stands for Citing Higher Achievement by, by Moscow Public Servants. We typically provide these awards or name these award winners in May during Public Service Recognition Week. Our Employee Advisory Committee and all employees get involved, we get quite a number of nominations, it's exciting to see. The purpose of the awards is to demonstrate the city's commitment to outstanding public service, teamwork, and finding innovative solutions to problems. And we also look to provide a high-profile means of recognizing city employees, one of the reasons we wanted to share those with you this evening. We have four categories, and I'll talk about those a little bit as I go through each of our, our award winners. And I want to start with, we've got Karen Potter here, one of our award winners, so I'll start with her. Karen won the award for exceptional internal, internal customer service. I'll just read a blip out of her nomination here, kind of gives away who, who gave her the nomination, but it's very kind words that I think are nice to hear. Karen constantly volunteers to reach out and to integrate herself throughout the city departments within her classification. As an intercessor of unity in promoting a positive, respectful, and supportive work environment, she accentuates service in its truest form and instills a family unit mindset. Her excellent interpersonal courtesy, diplomacy, and composure with city employees is demonstrated each and every day. In Karen's 36-month tenure, she has developed a pattern of volunteering, counseling, and serving others, even though she is busy with her own work. In summary, Karen has made numerous other personal contributions for the advancement of internal customer service for the city. Karen's enthusiasm, inspiration, and innovative thinking is extraordinary and contagious. She's been a great service contributor to all that interact with her throughout the city. Thank you for considering my nomination, it is my last request as a city servant before retirement, so Chief Duke put this in, and I think it, it fits well. So thank you to Karen so much for all she does. And I should mention, all of our award winners are featured downstairs, we have photos with their categories, and that's up for the full year, which is, it's exciting.
Should we get Karen up here?
Do you have a quick photo, perhaps?
Yeah, we need to get Karen up here.
Do you want to say a few words, Karen?
Come on up, Karen, would you like that? Would you like to talk? She's a very modest lady that does a wonderful job for us. He's gonna want us to get out front here, he always does his-
Oh, he wants the mayor's picture in the background.
Smile, Walter.
I don't need to be the only one in it.
So, and then I'll highlight our internal, or excuse me, our external customer service winner. This is Kristen Graham, who's an administrative assistant with our Parks and Recs Department. From her very first days, from her nomination here, Kristen has made a monumental difference in the service this department provides to the citizens of the community, as well as to other city staff. She embodies the meaning of customer service. No request for service ends before the action is absolutely complete, and even then, if the issue is sensitive, she follows up to see what else can be done. Phone calls are quick to be answered while courtesy, tact, and a very real manner for concern are offered. When lines start to build up, other employees are quickly called to assist so the patrons are helped more quickly. Correspondence is answered both quickly and professionally. When citizen inquiries reach her, she provides them as much information as needed to satisfy the citizen. No one is left without complete assistance. And that's Kristen, you'll see her if you go out to the Herc at the main counter there. And she's typically there with a smile on her face and ready to help you every single time, which is very nice. Next, I will talk about our teamwork award recipient. Teamwork is for the superior ability to work with employees and assist in an extraordinary manner. And Scott Boundtrager was the award winner here, so you've seen fairly regularly at committee and council. He's the Assistant City Engineer in our Public Works Department, and his nomination reads, "Scott is always willing to provide guidance to and share his knowledge with less experienced engineering staff members. He maintains constructive working relationships with those he supervises, the contractors, the development community, and all city staff. At all times, he is direct, calm, straightforward, honest, and polite with internal and external customers. If you have a problem that is under Scott's domain, you should be glad. He will always follow through, do his best to get you the needed information or service, or otherwise take appropriate action. Scott doesn't often need to assist the public at the engineering front desk, but will readily do so when others are occupied." And if you don't see Scott at these meetings, you can see him in the building right behind us, so. And then finally, Rookie of the Year, Rob DeVoe with our Parks and Recs Facilities Division. He is a senior maintenance worker, and Rookie of the Year is a new employee with up to two years of service who demonstrates an exceptional positive attitude and enthusiasm for the job. Rob's current duties range from general building maintenance and support to plumbing, electrical, lighting, HVAC, carpentry, pool, operation, lock and key systems, maintenance and management, painting, snow removal, and all phases of construction and renovations. Within each of these areas, there are multiple tasks and skill sets that Rob has or is in the process of learning, and he's handled all of these duties well. I guess as a final statement, I will say that I feel that I very easily could have nominated Rob for not only this category, but also the teamwork or exceptional customer service awards, but I felt by nominating him for Rookie of the Year, it enables me to truly highlight the things that Rob has accomplished and point out that is he a true, that he is a true asset for the city. Those are our four CHAMP winners for the year. So we look forward to the nomination process again next spring, and we'll feature those folks May through the summer as well. If you have any questions on the awards or recipients?
Let's give them all a round of applause. Thank you, Karen was the only one that was here with us tonight, so thank you very much for your hard efforts, we all appreciate it. There you go. Okay, next, Citizens Commission Report from our fire chief, Brian Nickerson. Chief, how you doing tonight?
Very good, mayor, council, how are you guys doing? Since you like numbers.
Okay.
I'm gonna inundate you with numbers. I think. If Gary didn't delete it for me.
I tried.
I know.
There we go.
I was, I was gonna worry for a minute. All right. We'll go over like the calls from last year. I was up here a couple of weeks ago, talking about our duplication of events and so forth that Walter so graciously brought forward and stuff. So I figured this time, we'd go over just to call the calls from last year, kind of where we were throughout the entire year. We're still about 70, 70 to 80 above last year so far, year-to-date so far. So last year, we ran a total of 2,333 calls for service. That includes everything from EMS calls, you'll see that as a 70.51 percent. That's everything from somebody's fall in, chest pains, heart attacks, vehicle accidents, those type of incidents. And then going around the, it's pretty self-explanatory for the most part. False alarms, we have 10 percent. That's a lot of fire alarms at the university, some of the apartment buildings that we have in town. Good Sam, for example, we've been there a few times this year already. So it's a variety of places that we go to. So that's kind of where we were last year. This kind of breaks it down into, into fires. Now, it says there we had 95 fires. Some people say, holy cow, you had 95 fires. Well, that includes somebody dry cooking on a stove, burning popcorn in a microwave at 3 o'clock in the morning. So it's, you know, it's a, it's a variety of calls within that, it just falls into that category as far as our record-keeping. So sometimes it's a little obscured in, in a sense. But going down the list, good intent, false alarm calls, good intent, somebody calls, it just turns out to be nothing, we'd go check the area and we'd go back home. So it kind of breaks everything down into numbers, too, on that. We keep talking about the overlapping calls, 1,166 of them or 50 percent of our calls last year were overlapping. That means basically, we respond to an incident, and within a couple of minutes, we'll have another, another one while we're still at the other incident. That doesn't include like, I mean, Walter, like, a few weeks ago is one right after another, this is actually on top of each other. So we have four, five, six people at a call, now we gotta fill another call with three, four, five, six people, depending on the type of incident. So 50 percent of the time, and we're averaging pretty close to that right now for the year-to-date as well. So I don't foresee it changing too much, you know, we got, we got a lot of year left, so, just don't know. But it's an interesting statistic, 'cause we haven't tracked it yet until, until we got to this new system. Busiest months, November is the busiest month, the, the least busy is February. I don't, I'm, you know, I, there is no answer of why, it's just, it just works out that way. I would think that it would kind of dip down in the, in the summer, but it doesn't. If you can look at May, June, July, August, it actually goes up. And wildland season last year kind of got us busy. And I would anticipate that this year is gonna be relatively the same from everything that I've heard and so forth, there was actually three, three wildland fires around the area today. So all the way down to Sooton and, and out in Garfield and, I forgot where the other one was, but I seen it on my screen today, so they're around. Hopefully, we can, we can get on them quickly and not have to spend hours and days. Day of the week, Wednesday is the busiest day, which again, is an interesting statistic of why. I don't know if you're getting ready for the weekend on Wednesday, or, I, I just, it's just-
Bizarre.
You know, you talk about, you talk about numbers being interesting, this is interesting because it's just, it, it's just, why, you know, you think back and like, why? Why is that the case? Why is it, why is Wednesday the busiest day?
Home day.
Like I said, getting ready for the weekend. Times of the day, why, you know, why is it busy at 12 o'clock noon, 1 o'clock in the afternoon to 2 o'clock? You know, slowest time is 05:00 in the morning. You can see it's kind of high in the evening, right around, you know, 5 o'clock, and then it kind of tapers off by midnight. So, so it's just, for planning purposes in the future, this will actually come in very handy as we get more data over the years and see a trend. And I hope to, in the next year or two, is be able to compare these side by side by side and be able to actually really see the, the trend. So, some of the projects we're working on or that's been completed, the thermal imaging cameras from the grant, we just purchased six of them, the chargers just got here on Friday. So hopefully, the city shop in the next couple of weeks will be installing the chargers. Multi-gas meters that we bought last year, or at the beginning of the year, is already installed. That information you just got on the previous screens is from the new and improved records management system that we have. It's just da, a lot of data that we haven't tracked before in this manner. It's been on paper, but not electronically to be able to run a report. Updating our new response guidelines, we just got six of them done, which actually will help with our training aspect going forward. We're implementing those, actually, they'll be effective July 6th, once we get them signed. So working with the fleet on the new engines and Gary and, and you guys in the future here, hopefully, and, and we can move that forward. Response plans with WICOM, some of the things that we're working on is how we respond to calls, what we, what units go. Just for example, we had a request from the University of Idaho to be able to respond to any elevator alarms with a known person in it. Beforehand, we were not dispatched to a call like that. So we have to change that response plan or actually make it in and of itself, 'cause it's new. So we're working on that. In the budget for this year, hopefully, we can replace the burn containers over at, over at Station 2, the live-fire training. Those are just deteriorating over the years, they're just due.
Explain what those are, chief, the burn containers, they're-
Basically, they're Connex box-
How large, how large they are, what they are?
10 by 40, regular Connex boxes you see on a ship or on a, on a trailer. And basically, we cut holes in it wherever we want it, put stairs in it, put doors or not put doors. Right now, we don't, we only have exterior doors on them. We hope to integrate some of our, some of our things that our residents are actually making for our, for our academy class, 'cause they all have a, a special project they do. So like our floor collapse prop, we hope to integrate maybe that in it this time, our door prop, just to make it a little more realistic, so when you're crawling around the floor and we wanna, you know, simulate somebody falling through a floor, then we can actually do that. It's a different experience, I can tell you, so. But it's very good training for our folks, because it's not something we do all the time. So the more we can get over there and use those, those tools, the better off we are. We're still gonna burn in them this fall and probably this summer a couple of times, but they're just due to be replaced, they only last really five, six, seven, eight years, maybe, depending on how much you use it.
These would be similar containers enhanced?
Basically, it's gonna be the exact same as what we have right now.
But with new features that you don't have now?
We, yeah, we built the features, but we hope, we hope to integrate those into the prop. That's the, that's the plan now, again, if it works out, because they're Connex boxes, so. So Scott's gonna be working on that, as long as we get the budget approved and so forth to do that. So hopefully, we can, we can, we can do that. Currently, I'm working on the emergency operations plan for the city with the University of Idaho and Latah County Emergency Management Director. So we got our first 65 pages done, more or less, draft done. We met last week about it, we have some changes and modifications to do, so it's a big step, big change from what we have, so hopefully, we're making positive progress. Hopefully, sir. I guess I'll see. But no, it's, and, and the whole thing is, is because previously, it hasn't been a collaborative effort. The other emergency plan, plan wasn't, so this time, we sat down, I sat down with Emergency Management Director for the university and, and in the county, so we all agreed that, hey, if we do it all together and work together to do it, it's gonna make life a whole lot simpler. We're all gonna be in the same spot anyway, we're all here together.
That's smart.
So let's just do it, do it together as one, and then, and then we'll keep moving forward. Moscow Volunteer Fire Department, been around 125 years as of next year, 2017. So we're in the process of planning a pretty big celebration next year, probably August.
What do you think that'll be?
Probably August, September-ish, yeah, we don't really know yet. A lot of the folks are kicking it around of what they want to do and so forth. So we're gonna make a bit, pretty big deal over it, invite all the neighboring departments and basically make it a whole-day event from what I'm hearing right now, so. So hopefully, we have some great folks that are wanting, that's actually volunteered to kind of spearhead the whole thing, so, which is great for me.
Volunteers volunteering?
Volunteers volunteering, which that's what we do, and that's what our folks do. And, and going back to all the calls, there's not many volunteer organizations that can run 2,333 calls and do what we do. There's, there's not very many at all. My hope in the, in the future, going forward at some point in time, is, is doing some research on, you know, what we do compared to other, you know, that don't, you know, that have maybe a university or have a college or something that's similar to us and kind of comparatively look at where we're at based on their call volume and so forth, so. We know what Pullman does, but, you know, their, their makeup is different. However, we run actually about the same amount of calls as they do, so. Academy class will be coming up this fall, actually be starting in August.
Is that one, you only got one guy?
Two. It's Academy Class 1. We actually just, we-
I thought maybe you only had one guy, I was gonna say, well-
Mayor, I've seen your name on the list for the academy, so. But no, we had one class, the online class- one class, the online class. We actually started just before the first of the year.
I'm good with numbers. I didn't know.
And those guys are actually finishing up. Uh, we have five, no, six of them that completed the online course, which is totally different than what we've done so far. Um, they'll be done in July. Um, so we're actually gonna graduate them when we graduate the other class this fall. So that way we do one big ceremony for everybody. Um, and a lot of our regular, or all the six are regular volunteers. So they wanted to try it, try it and do something a little bit different. Um, but the incoming class, uh, residents, we're gonna have six new ones. We have people coming. I had another gentleman apply today um to be a volunteer. So those type of folks will be go- coming into the class. So hopefully we can get ten or fifteen folks into the class this year. So, um, training, uh, multi-company stuff, multi-agency. We're working with Pullman maybe to do a, a, a multi-agency training of some kind. Uh, we've actually worked with, brought our ladder actually over to Pullman. Colfax brought theirs up to Pullman and they kinda compared ladders and what they have, what they don't have, and what they can do, what they can't do. So, um, that was um, two months ago, um, that we did that. And then live fire training, we hope to have more of it and do it with other, other folks as well. The invitation's open to everybody around to use our facility. The Potlatches, the Troyes, the Dearys, the Geneses, everybody's more than welcome to use it. Um, and then, uh, so yeah, it's, it's a, it's fun to go over and burn. So, uh, fund drive will be this fall for the volunteers. And their, and uh, their fund drive this year has been very, very successful. Um, probably about, they've collected about a hundred and eleven percent of their anticipated stu- um, funds. So, um, I tell you what, like I said, with the volunteers doing as great as they do, and they're out, you know, participating in events and stuff, you know, just like Mr. Kimmelin said, I mean, we had, we had a ladder, a rescue, the fire safety trailer, uh, Joe's vehicle, and um, not sure if there was something else over there, but um, oh, the bear ambulance uh was over there. So that was all staffed by all the volunteers. So, you know, they, they just, they, they just keep going and going and going. Uh, some days it's harder than others, but you know, it's, it's expected. Um, but the job that they do, the commitment that they have far exceeds, you know, what, what we could, what we could even expect. So, I mean, my hat's off to them for the amount of time some of these folks put in and, and stuff. So I'm just pleased to be here with, with them. So, um, the ambulance company put in, um, put in service a new ambulance forty-four, which is called the Bear Ambulance. So we had the University of Idaho ambulances, which is ambulance forty-one. So this one got painted red and, and red and black and to uh, in honor of the high school, uh, the Bears. Um, rumor has it that the next one is gonna be interesting in itself again. So I can tell you it's not gonna be a bear and it's not gonna be the University of Idaho. So, um, I don't know what they're really looking at.
Well, let's hope it's not a Boise State. I'm pretty sure that one.
I don't think so. I don't think so. I don't think it's gonna be.
Hope it's not purple either.
Um, but just, you know, last but not least, the volunteers, like I said, they, the tremen- the, the amount of time that they spend, uh, meetings and stuff, and I just sent out a, a uh, engine specification to some of them. Already, already got information back from one of them. I just sent it out on Friday. And the specifications are eighty-nine pages. And I already got feedback from one. So, I mean, it's that kinda stuff that, you know, they're really interested and really, really participate, you know, some more than others, but time allows what, what time allows. But, you know, we couldn't obviously do what we do and, and get the time that we have without them. So it's a, and I appreciate all you guys' support and everything that they do and the funds you provide and the equipment we buy and, and all that. So, um, it's much deserved to them, that's for sure.
Well, Fire Department does a great job and the volunteers and this whole community is very engaged in it, Brian. So, Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Chief, you mentioned ten percent of your calls are false alarms. About five years ago, we instituted a false alarm fine system in the city in the attempt to reduce the number of false alarms. And uh, my memory is that it did so, um, that we do not find every time we get a false alarm, but we're looking at patterns or places that can't seem to figure out how to get their smoke detector fixed and it keeps going off and you have to roll equipment through town, uh, you know, you know, in, in the best way possible, but still dangerous to run a fire truck through the middle of a red light. Um, are we still instituting the fines as needed and is it, are we, you know, making any progress in driving them down?
Yeah, I mean, and just in, in talking to Joe about it, uh, they've came down significantly. Um, and we don't find that much. Actually, we sit down and meet about it, um, fairly regularly, um, of where and why it went off. Um, it's a little different than just constantly going off all the time than it is somebody burnt piece of toast, which is not uncommon. Um, now if it's four trips burning toast, then they're probably gonna get fined, uh, get a ticket for it. But, uh, and that's the whole point of the tracking system is we can track those things a little bit better. Um, but ten percent, I mean, false alarm calls, ten percent, that's actually not, that's not overly bad. Could it be better? Sure. Um, but it's not from what, like, like you said, I, it's not the extreme like it was before. But I think it has helped.
Jim?
Of those false alarm cars, calls, what percentage of them would you say are like intentional prank false alarms?
Not very many. A lot of them are burnt toasts, burnt popcorn. Um, I, you know, it, it.
Hairspray?
There's been hairspray in the, in the, one of the, one of the buildings over by the university. I'll just leave it at that. Uh, but yeah, it's, it's, we don't have very many that are actual pranks.
Gee, do you wanna say something?
Hairspray what? Help me understand, sir. Like.
Because you spray it on your hair, of course.
Yeah.
And there's a smoke detector right above you, just by where the, by where the mirror is and a dressing table, I guess you could, you would say, a counter.
Okay.
And it's right above you.
I had no idea.
Yeah, I move a lot, you know.
I don't want that to happen anymore.
It could be dangerous.
But no, it's, I mean, it, there's not very many, not very many that are, that are actually maliciously just going over and pulling the fire.
Well, thank you, Chief, for a wonderful report and we all appreciate it, Dave.
Appreciate it, Chief.
Fire Department does. Thank you again. Kudos to the volunteers.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number six, change in meeting schedule due to Independence Day. Jan Piffner?
Yes, next, uh, council meeting two weeks from now falls on July fourth. And by the city code, that meeting will be held on July fifth, uh, same time, same place. Just a reminder to let folks know that we'll have a, a Tuesday meeting rather than a Monday meeting.
Okay, I think everybody'd be okay with that. We don't have to have a motion or anything for that.
I, I didn't think we did either, but it's shown here as action to confirm it.
You want us to do it?
Is that necessary, Gary?
That's what we've always done, but the code automatically sets it over. We do it mostly as notice. Uh, probably the action is a carryover from the olden days.
Okay. Well, with that, we are at the end of the meeting and I will go on to reports. I'll start with you, Art.
Uh, yeah, Public Works and Finance, uh, all the issues that were before us uh came up again tonight. Uh, the Sustainable Environment Commission is launching into a review of chemicals used in the parks, somewhat similar to the study they did a couple of years ago, the chemicals used by the Road and Streets Crew for spraying along ditches and things. They're gonna look into what the parks are using with an eye towards, are there duplicated chemicals? Is there one chemical that maybe it could be used more and get rid of the other one just in terms of hazard to the environment? And especially an eye towards reducing the nicotinoids, which are particularly toxic to bees in conjunction with our pollinator week proclamation we just had. So they're launching a new initiative there. Uh, Fair and Affordable Housing Commission is put forth. I, we've all seen in our mailboxes the letter from the Fair and Affordable Housing Commission relative to providing some bridge support to the sojourners, uh, not in terms of an ongoing budgetary contribution, but uh, a bridge grant to help them either seek further grants to support their operations or provide a, a soft landing, I guess, for the clients they might have there if it comes down to that. Uh, with the Urban Renewal Agency, things are slowly, slowly progressing at the Sixth and Jackson Lot with Sangria. Sangria people have settled in on a uh, building plan that involves a, a basement for a root cellar for some of their crops that they have. Uh, main floor, first uh, up to four businesses, two floors of uh, urban residential apartments. So they've settled in on that and are getting ready to launch as soon as we can get through the Idaho Department of Environmental Quality Requirements relative to cleaning up the nitrates that are present in the ground from ammonia dripping from a seed house there for some years. But uh, it's presenting a little bit of a moving target because every time we think we're done, they say, well, how about one more test? And it's kinda like, oh, for heaven's sakes. So we're hoping that we finally have the whole thing wrapped up and finished and should have a covenant not to sue by sometime in mid-July. So with those three or four things, that's what I have.
Okay, Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, several of the things that I've done the last two weeks uh were also done by other members of the council and I won't go into them too much and they certainly can pick up their part. But on uh, June the eighth, I attended the Palouse Commercial Real Estate present, annual presentation on the state of commercial real estate in Pullman and Moscow. Um, a lot of data, a lot of good information about trends, something like the, the chief's report in terms of, of what's happening when and with, and with what. Um, that evening at, on the eighth, I attended a regional mutual aid fire season meeting. This was a presentation out at Station Two where Troy, Potlatch, Julieta Kendrick, of course Moscow, uh, Pullman attended and talked about the upcoming fire season. Um, they had a present, presentation from uh National Oceanic and Atmospheric uh, Agency out of Spokane, talking about, you know, reading the tea leaves and forecasting the weather. Um, it's going to be slightly hotter and about as much precipitation as we expect annually. So nothing outstanding there. Um, but it is coming earlier and the early snow melt took a lot of the moisture out. So that might be the big thing to it. The Red Cross was there talking about their activities as well. Uh, on the thirteenth, I attended the monthly Fire Department Board Meeting. On the sixteenth, attended a three-hour P-Back meeting, uh, where we talked about, again, the water supply alternative project, where we're looking at alternative supplies of water from the surface for the cities of Moscow, Pullman and the basin. Um, we have narrowed it down to, from, what was it, thirty-eight projects, down to something like thirteen, and now looking at combinations of those to get the amount of water that's been deemed, will be deemed necessary, uh, because not all of them provide all the water in the world. A lot of them are small, uh, in terms of the amount of water they can provide. But uh, three hours of can we, can't we on that to be continued. Um, in the afternoon, I attended a, a tour of the sewer treatment plant along with Gina and Art and Victoria. Um, I did it eight years ago when I first came on council. Uh, a little bit has changed since then, but again, quite interesting. Um, Gina and Art were much more into the chemistry of it than I was. I wanted to know where does it come in, where does it go out, and what have you done to it since you got it? Um, that's kinda my limit. Um, on the seventeenth, attended the Wisecape, Wisecape ribbon cutting down here on the corner. Um, when you come up to this red light, uh, either to go north or turn west, uh, stop and look at City Hall for a minute. I think it is really a good new look for City Hall with that corner being done like it is. And it also serves to educate people about what can be done with landscaping to reduce water use. Um, and with that, we're up to tonight.
Okay, Jim?
Uh, let's see, Administrative Committee. Uh, the crux of that meeting was uh the installation of our new Councilor Gina Trucchio as the Vice Chair of the Administrative Committee. And uh, you'll be uh, having your feet in the fire next week because I won't be here for, for that. So you're, you're gonna be in charge next week. I'll just give you a heads up on that. And uh, the Transportation Commission met last Thursday and um, they're kinda wrapping up the bicycle facilities, uh, things that are going on around the city with the wayfinding signs and uh, and that should all be installed within the next year. Uh, according to less, they should, a bunch of it should be done this, this summer. Um, and also they're looking into the bicycle tourism and what, what their role might be in, in uh, in enhancing the bicycle tourism opportunities as the trails get completed, the Laton Trail down to Kendrick and possibly the Colfax to Pullman and the possibility of uh, um, connecting with the barges that come up the river, the, the tours, um, tour ships that come up the Snake River in Dock and Lewiston, uh, that they could bring people on bicycles up to tour the wineries and ride around the Palouse and then ride the ship back down to Portland. So there's a variety of things that possibly going on that would enhance the um, bicycle tourism in this area and they're, they're kinda working on that. And that's all I have.
Okay, Gina?
Cool. Uh, the, the one uh, commission that met in the last couple of weeks for me would have been, or was going to be, the Arts Commission. We did not meet uh, two or three days before Art Walk because of Art Walk and plus we didn't have a quorum. And I will be gone for the Parks and Rec uh, meeting this week and the PKC as well. So I'm only carrying about thirty percent of my weight right now. And.
Well, I'll pick up. Jim's gonna load you up.
Well, yeah, now I found out last week I have to come up with some jokes too. So try to get up to speed quickly.
Don?
Art took care of the urban renewal and uh, you may or may not have seen the uh, information put out that the CODO for affordable housing, we've started building the house uh, on Morton Street and hopefully that'll be done and hopefully it'll be priced, well, it will be priced at about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It'll be a two-bedroom, one-bath, brand-new home. And uh, we uh pared down the cost as much as we could and still got as much as uh, we could as far as what we wanted to present to the public. And uh, we're looking forward to the moving along of that project and the completion of it. And then on uh, June seventh, the Moscow Tree Commission met and they're still moving along with the code revision uh, for uh, the new subdivision tree planting and revisions for Street Tree Planning Guide. And one of the things they've come up with on that is take out some of the types of trees, pare that down a little bit so it's easier for people to deal with. And then uh, there's a risk assessment project and a young lady by the name Marie Wagner, who's a U of I student, um, has taken the information that the members of the committee have compiled and one, has gone out and looked. And we've got about three hundred trees in Moscow that are at rest, at risk. So they're gonna be working on that. And then um, everything else there was pretty much just business as usual. And uh, but the, the big thing, I think, is the uh, uh, tree risk assessment and then uh, the uh, getting um, some of these, uh, oh, pardon me, excuse me, I'm going over time. But uh, they're also going to start a project on uh, planning for street replacement downtown of trees. We've got some that are uh, not, not gonna be with us very far into the future. And I said, uh, this council person plus everyone else at this uh, diocese up here wants to see trees downtown. However, we uh, probably don't care if they're all the same type of tree. We just wanna see green. And uh, trees are becoming more expensive all the time. That's what I have.
Okay. Uh, June the seventh, we had the Greenway Bike Ride, which was great. It was accompanied by both Art and Jim Boland. There was like forty to fifty of us riding around, Les McDonald as well. So we had a good time. Tyler Palmer was with us and a number of others from the city. Uh, that was a kick in the pants. And as Walter had talked about on uh, June the eighth, the Palouse Commercial Realtors had their thing at Banyans and talked about economic development and growth and stuff between Pullman and Moscow and our whole area. That was a good thing. And then on the seventeenth, we had, of course, the Art Walking. And Walter had talked about the ribbon cutting. That was really a pretty neat thing on the Wisecape thing. And it's, I was very proud of Nicole Baker. of Nicole Baker for the, she's the one that actually designed that thing and got that going and, you know, so I wanted to give her a good kudos for it because she had a lot of planning and work. She was really nervous about that. Well, I thought she did an outstanding job. Ah, good, it made me, it was wonderful. Anyway, with that, and then of course that was Art Walk and, uh, Henry Stinson, who is our artist out here, drew a portrait of me right up there and, uh, I don't know if anybody would be willing to buy that. So I got, he'd be hanging around here for quite a while with.
Do the darts come with it?
With that and, and, uh, look, and a bunch of us are going to be at Association Idaho Cities this week and we'll talk about that next time. Gary, have you got anything for us?
I have no reports, sir.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Jim move, John second, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? We are closed at 8:30, folks. Have a nice evening. Thank you all for joining us.